Can you stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Spanish translation.
We have Vivian Rodriguez with us tonight. Vivian?
Muy buenas noches y bienvenidos de parte de la junta directiva del distrito escolar de Santa Barbara. Si hay alguien que necesita la ayuda de un intérprete, por favor levante la mano para darle un audífono. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have headsets for the hearing impaired if you need them. Introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions. Dr. Sarvas?
Well, let's, oh, there we are, right there. Good. We have with us tonight Rachel Venturino. Rachel, would you please come up? And Amy Ranzelhoff. They are president and vice president of San Marcos High's Earth Club. Rachel and Amy have a short presentation on the school's green efforts. And Board, I think you'll be very impressed. I've been attending some of their events and it's it's just wonderful what they've been putting together.
So, our club was reestablished six months ago with the goals of making San Marcos more We started with a project of collecting 3,500 water bottles. The purpose of this was to spread awareness of the overuse and abuse of plastic bottles in our community. We displayed this at the Earth Day Festival. And we got other schools involved such as La Colina, Santa Barbara High, Santa Barbara Junior High. And we also got the UC Santa Barbara Recreation Center to help us.
When the San Marcos Earth Club learned that 3,500 plastic water bottles are thrown away every five seconds in the United States, we decided to collect that amount of water bottles and then display them in a giant six-foot clear display container, as was shown earlier. So after months of rummaging through trash cans and with the participation of other local schools, we were able to display this container at the 40th Anniversary Earth Day Festival in Alameda Park. And over 30,000 people attended this festival over the two-day period. And Earth Club members were there to share their knowledge and educate people about the abuse of plastic water bottles. Our hope was that the visual effect of this project would open people's eyes to how many resources are being wasted and how quickly something as small as water bottles build up.
So, we learned through our research that Oh, we learned that it takes 1.5 million barrels of oil to produce plastic water bottles each year in the United States. We also learned that the amount of energy it takes to make these bottles is equivalent to what could power 250,000 homes or fuel 100,000 cars in one year. And we knew that educating people on recycling could be beneficial because recycling just one plastic bottle can save enough energy to light a 60-watt light bulb for six hours.
And in addition to collecting water bottles, we've initiated energy audits for our school and we're working to help improve our school's recycling program. And we're also working with the district to have a potential photovoltaic project on our campus. And Rachel has also been attending district-wide recycle and energy meetings as a representative of our school in order to learn about ways our school can become greener. And we also hosted a walk and bike to school day in May. And we also most recently had an assembly at our school sponsored by the Alliance for Climate Education and local politician Dos Williams.
Also, our club has made recycle signs, like the one you see up here. We posted these on recycle bins around our school. We also had another sign that was what can't be recycled. So it was this sign, but it said, "Please do not throw away these items," and we put them on trash cans around our school. We wanted to educate students who maybe wanted to recycle but didn't know what items could or could not be recycled. That was our goal for that. And we also made recycled Earth Club t-shirts and we sold those. We bought shirts at thrift stores and made the graphic at our own school in the graphic department.
Additionally, we've also applied for and received a $5,000 grant from the Alliance for Climate Education, which we'd like to use to install two new water bottle filtered refill stations to replace our unfiltered water fountains on campus. And we're doing this in hopes to increase the use of reusable water bottles and reduce the use of plastic water bottles that a lot of kids take to school.
We also had the fortune to be the grand prize-winning club in the nation for Increase Your Green campaign put on by DoSomething.org. And through this campaign, we were awarded $5,000 in addition and four HP Artist Edition laptops. We can use the money for any environmental efforts at our school. So we will be researching what we want to spend that money on this summer. And we couldn't have done all of this, especially the water bottle project, without the help of the special ed department at our school. The students got very involved and they headed the water bottle project at our school, so, at San Marcos. So they contributed a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. And Board, do you have any questions or comments? Mrs. Parker?
First of all, I just want to say quickly, I'm amazed at how much you have done in a club that has just recently been sort of reinvented and brought back to life. Congratulations. It's astounding. And I think that one of the things that maybe the Board could do, just a simple thing, as I look around the room at the water bottles in here and at these non-recyclable cups, and I'll say, "I'm guilty because I've got a water bottle going back there." And, but maybe we could look into having our, you know, bringing our own cups for water. And are you both juniors? So it's fantastic. I hope that you will continue with your leadership with the club for next year so that it gets really solidified and continues on even as you move on to bigger and better things after 2011.
Fortunately, we have our district purchasing agent here and will be changing over the cups.
Mr. Aaron.
Dr. Noel. We always thank the students for their efforts and we always salute the parents who stand behind the students.
Mrs. Deacon.
I just want to congratulate you first of all on winning that award, which is fantastic, a national award like that. And I really like that water filtration system that you're buying and I'd love to see our other schools do that as well. You've shown great leadership and I'm really hopeful that that'll begin to be evidenced all over the district. And I agree, we need to lead by example and get rid of our plastic water bottles. But congratulations, and it's so appropriate that the pilot solar project will be at San Marcos. So, thank you for staying involved in that as well.
Well, I want to, I'm sorry, I want to echo Ms. Deacon's comments about the water filtration system that you have there. I think those would be great if we could get them in all of our schools. And I think they could even work in a number of public buildings. And you and your club would sort of be the leaders in helping to change that for, I think we could do it for the entire community if we got enough people on board. So I just really applaud the leadership that you've already shown in that area. And congratulations also on winning the award, but more importantly, congratulations on really helping the environment and helping to educate all of us. So, thank you.
I agree with everything. So, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know that you're working with various faculty members. I believe Rob Getler is at the lead as your club advisor, who is just great in science in action and going green. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Superintendent, any more?
I do have one other presentation. In fact, I'd like to ask Mario Borgatello to come up to the podium, if you will please, Mario. On February 23rd, 2010, the Board awarded Marborg Industries a one-year, $80,000 contract for waste hauling and recycling services at San Marcos High, Galita Valley Junior High, and Dos Pueblos High Schools. Then in April, aware of the ongoing impact of the state budget crisis in our school districts, Mario Borgatello, president of Marborg Industries, and as I understand, an alum of Santa Barbara Junior High and Santa Barbara High School. And that was just a couple of years ago, right, Mario? Stepped forward with the commitment to provide the hauling and recycling services for 2010-11, for this entire school year to come. And that is, after having a successful bid on it, at no charge to the district. This donation This donation represents a savings of $80,000 to the Unrestricted General Fund. We are very grateful for this contribution, which is part of the Marborg's Save a Teacher program. We will formally kick off our partnership at the start of the school year when we unveil this sign at the three high schools, or I'm sorry, at the three schools. And I guess there's a junior high there as well. Anyone who has lived in the Santa Barbara-Galita area for any length of time is familiar with the Marborg Industries as a prominent business entity. But Marborg is more than that. The company and the Borgatello family have been heavily involved in the community and sponsor or participate in numerous local events and worthwhile causes. This generous donation represents the second time in recent years that Marborg has directly supported the school district as the company previously donated thousands of dollars' worth of recycling containers to help the district ramp up its recycling efforts. It is with our deepest appreciation that I thank Mario Borgatello and Marborg Industries for supporting our schools. Thank you, Mario.
Thank you, Dr. Sarvas, for that wonderful introduction. When you live in a community, as long as we have lived in a community, and I was just talking to Brian in the back about this, you become more than just attached. You become really part of the community. And I have read article after article in the news press about the difficult times that the district is facing. And we are not facing great times either, but I can assure you that we're in better shape than you folks are. So, after winning the bid, we just was kicking this thing around and we decided, "Let's do something." And we felt that it was the right thing to do. Now, enough about that. Now, I'm, the two previous speakers, those young ladies back there, I commend you for your hard work and for your interest. But I am here to tell you that we're going to be checking on you. And the way that we're going to be checking on you, and I discussed this with Brian before, we are going to do trash, once school gets going, we are going to do a trash audit of each school. We're going to go out and we're going to pick up San Marcos, the solid waste. And we're going to dump it on the ground. And we're going to see what's in there. Because part of this, as I had told Brian, and it's not contingent upon you people making these, but we're putting out a carrot, if you will, for you folks to really get your faculty and all of the custodians on board. And a lot of it is in that arena right there with the custodians. And you've, you know, there's two trash cans out, two bins out there, and one is blue and one is brown. And I mean, it's quite obvious which stream goes where. But it ends up in the wrong place a lot of times. So we are going to do a trash audit, and not just one, but we're going to keep doing it, to see what is in the brown bin, which ultimately would go to Tejegas. Now, the least amount of material that goes to Tejegas, because those tip fees are $67.50 a ton. That's expensive. So we're going to find out, and I would love to be in communication with these two fine young ladies. And our staff will, we will tell them what is in the trash bins. And then you will have, so to speak, as they say, hard evidence as to how you are doing with the program. Because these young ladies can, I mean, their heart is in the right place, but you're home studying, trying to get great grades so you can move on in your life next year to college. And you can't be policing the staff. So we're going to police it for you and we're going to give you the results on what is going on in the recycling arena at all of the schools that are involved in this program. I know you have of
We look, we look forward to that. And we're going to notify the principals because this will become a competition among them, certainly.
Well, yeah, maybe you could make a little, that's a great idea, is put something out there among the, because I'm here to tell you, I don't care, we do trash audits for UCSB all the time. And it does help because it just reinforces the fact that more effort can be placed. You know, it's late in the evenings, the custodians, and I'm not, I'm not, so to speak, ridiculing the custodians, but there can be, there can be a lot more effort put in. There is. I can tell you right now that we're going to report back to you and we are going to show you what is going in the brown bin and what ultimately is ending up in the Tejegas landfill. And we would look forward to that. And I hope our little contribution can save a teacher.
Thank you very much, Mario.
Thank you.
Please thank your brother David for me also. And Anthony. And Anthony too.
This is a good connection we have here in these two presentations.
Superintendent's report?
Last week's high school graduations and junior high promotions were well-attended and well-celebrated. We can capture the, you can capture the flavor of the graduations if you go to our district's homepage and you'll see various photos of the various graduation commencement exercises and students. Diplomas were issued to 1,558 students. At least 77% or 1,200 students tell us that they are headed to college next year. In fact, we'll put this in the board brief so you'll have a complete list. In fact, they're headed to 164 two-year or four-year colleges and universities. For example, 153 are going to a UC campus. We have 31 of those going to Cal Berkeley, 42 to UCSB, 30 to UCLA. 79 are going to a California State University with 40 going to Cal Poly. 11 are going to Ivy League schools. Six are off to Harvard, others off to Yale, Cornell, the other Ivy League schools. 10 will be going to Stanford. Five are off to USC, one to Caltech, one to MIT. 13 are going to Westmont. 712 are going to Santa Barbara City College. Santa Barbara City College wins. And the balance are off to colleges and universities throughout the nation and throughout the world, as far away as the universities of Glasgow and Oxford. Congratulations to the class of 2010. And we'll be getting you more information about our graduating class, about students who didn't make it to graduation, about the students who did, where they're headed, various numbers and statistics. So we'll be getting that to you in the near future. Well, we've been meeting regularly with the Adelante Charter School petitioners. They've been making progress on the petition language, on the attachments, on the MOUs. And we expect to bring new memos, memorandums of understanding and petition language to you at our next board meeting so that you can discuss those in preparation for anticipated approval at the end of June. You know, that that was contingent upon delivery of, what was it, 43 different conditions? It's been something that they've been working on fast and furiously. Professional Development Week, this week. We have our teaching staff beginning yesterday in sessions that will continue through August. This week, our teachers are in the computer labs getting training on Edugsoft, pre-advanced training, placement training, math and science vertical training, as well as English and social science training. Scott Purdy will be conducting a training on classroom management. During the summer, there will be additional trainings on topics such as Read 180, open court, word processing, and the fundamentals of rhetoric. Board, I invite you to go to that one with me, the fundamentals of rhetoric. Board, you know, I just notified you that we learned that the Home Instruction for Parents of Preschool Youngsters, which we refer to as HIPPI program, Home Instruction for Parents of Preschool Youngsters, is struggling to stay afloat during these difficult economic times. We didn't realize the extent to which their funding was jeopardized. It was established locally nine years ago to serve educational needs of low-income Spanish and English-speaking families with preschool-aged children. The program provides parents with instruction and materials for their children and it provides children with high-quality language development, problem-solving, pre-math concepts, auditory and visual discrimination skills that can positively impact a child's chances for success as they enter school. Without the HIPPI program, which has provided services for more than 1,000 families in our community, it will close its doors for the upcoming school year for lack of funding. Services are at risk because funding from first five Santa Barbara individual donors, charitable foundations, and organizations has changed. In fact, we're seeing sort of a residual fallout from the economic downturn. You know, it didn't hit that first year, but it sure has hit this last year and is continuing to impact us. The financial landscape is changing and for organizations like this, it does affect our services. HIPPI operates on a $100,000-a-year annual budget and currently has only $5,000 to continue the program. In order to offer the program with a start date of October of 2010, the program is searching for funding pledges by August 2010. And we are currently searching for donations. The Board Brief. My office regularly issues a report to the Board called the Board Brief. It's a collection of articles and information items on school and district matters. A copy of the May 28 Board Brief is on display in the reception area. The last Board Brief included the information that was provided to the last Special Education Stakeholders Meeting. Board will continue that discussion tonight, but you had information from that meeting as well as information about the state Special Education Self-Review. The findings from the last self-review and the current self-review will be provided as soon as we receive the letter from the California Department of Education. And that's it for the superintendent's report tonight.
On the HIPPI program, what is the district's role? Of the $100,000, do we provide any of that?
No.
It's all been private funding, local donations for the most part.
Thank you. Mrs. Parker? Nope. Okay. Board, C2, Board Comments and Correspondence. Mrs. Parker?
A few things. One is, obviously, those of us who have been attending awards nights and graduation ceremonies will agree with Dr. Sarvas. It's been an amazing few weeks. It's, obviously lasts a while with so many award ceremonies. I had a lot of people say, "How do you do that on the day of when we're doing the junior high ceremonies and the graduations of the high schools?" And yet, it is, everybody's happy. It's wonderful shaking so many hands and it's just a terrific, terrific day. So, I got to be at Dos Pueblos and La Cumbre that day, and I know that some of you covered the other places. So, congratulations to our graduates and to those students who promoted on to high school. I have had a chance to go to the Professional Development Week so far. I've been at the AP trainings, the pre-AP trainings for Language Arts and Math and Social Sciences and Science. And if other board members can pop over to Santa Barbara Junior High School, that's where most of the trainings are being held. And you can always email Dr. White and find out if you're, anything that you're particularly interested in, where that's being held. But it's just been a terrific way to connect with what the teachers are learning to, so that they can put it in place for next year. I've been really impressed. And finally, I just wanted to share that last week, I was able to go down with quite a few Harding staff members and Dr. Willis Copeland from the UCSB Graduate School of Education to visit Willard International Baccalaureate School at Pasadena Unified. And it was really enlightening and I want to publicly thank the Harding community for welcoming me on that trip and for Dr. Kingston for inviting me to go. I learned a lot about the International Baccalaureate at the elementary level. So it was really, really valuable.
Mrs. Deacon.
Just to dovetail on the graduation piece, I attended the La Cuesta graduation. Dr. Noel and I were both there. And I have to say, I was really struck by what a good decision we made to consolidate the continuation program downtown here. There was probably double the number of students graduating than in years past. At that graduation, the Alta Vista students were there. We heard wonderful personal vignettes about their success stories and it was really heartening. And I was also at Santa Barbara Junior High in San Marcos. So many smiling faces, so many happy students and parents. And it's just, it's a great part of this job, I have to say, because it really makes it all feel worthwhile. And it was wonderful to be there.
Dr. Noel.
Yes, I too attended the La Cuesta graduation, the first one I had been to. And I wanted to go for sure before my term on the boards were, and it was very rewarding, remarkable job that they're doing. And my hat's off to the whole staff and to Kathy Avenue in particular. On the other end, what awaits our students when they leave, I have to say, we attended an event at UCLA where our son is. And what is, what awaits the students, if they're interested in music, are opportunities that are beyond grasp in a smaller environment. The UCLA chorus combined with the Los Angeles chorus was 175 voices singing Beethoven Mass in German with a 40-piece symphony orchestra in Royce Hall. And our students can aspire to something magnificent if they go that way. It's just marvelous.
Mrs. Cudero.
Well, I'll also comment on the graduations. I was very fortunate to be able to attend the graduation of my great niece from Galita Valley Junior High. And so that was quite a thrill to be able to shake her hand and give her a hug. And then also, as I, as I always try to do, I attended the graduation at Santa Barbara High School, reliving my own graduation days. It was, it brings back, it always brings back so many memories. But the graduations are wonderful times and the awards ceremonies are wonderful times to acknowledge the amazing accomplishments that our students achieve. It seems like every single year, I'm just in shock over what the teachers are doing in the classrooms and what the students are able to achieve. So it really is one of the best jobs, parts of being a board member because we really get to see the fruits of our, of the work that everybody does in the district. So it, those, these last couple of weeks really have been quite exciting. And we look forward to them every year.
I'll chime in. I had a great time at Santa Barbara High School at their awards presentations. And then I spent my time at La Colina for both their awards and for the graduation. And I was, I'm very appreciative of how they handled the both events at La Colina is that the students did the whole thing. The principal was there, David was there, guiding. You could hear his voice in the background. Go here, go there, do that, sit down, stand up. But the students did the entire program. And I thought that was very, very special to see that take place at the junior high level. And it showed a lot of leadership on David's part to stand aside and let them, let them do it. I appreciated that very much. One other thing on Board comment, I'll just say it real quick. I I want to apologize to the board and also to the members for our last meeting going until 12:30. I don't plan on letting that happen again. I don't think we did our best at that hour, and I take responsibility, because I sit here, but I don't want anybody thinking we're going to be here until midnight or 12:30 in the future. By the time we have a break, we'll know much, what we're going to do, and we'll come up with a plan. But, Mrs. Fisher, you're here for the very last item, and I don't know what time that will be, but it won't be 12 o'clock. It may not be at all, but I appreciate you being here for that item, but it is the last on the agenda. And I guess, one comment to staff, assume in some cases that we've read the background material, and that maybe it's not necessary to read every PowerPoint, every presentation, you know, in great detail. We have to figure out ways to speed things up. We don't want to have not to have the information, and we want the public to have it, but at some times, we need to, and the board needs to be cognizant of the fact also as we talk, and I'm just going on right now too long. So, thank you very much. Announcement of closed session, item C3. On B1, the student discipline, that's on the agenda later. On B2, we had 10 different case numbers, 11 different students, I guess, and we did take action, and I quickly will read these. In case number 2010/11-1, a motion was made to deny the appeal, made by Parker, seconded by Deacon, passed 4 to 0. On case number 2010/11-2, voted to deny the appeal. These are all on inter-district transfer requests. Ford is, with Dr. Noel absent, okay. How soon you forget. 20-10/11-2, voted to deny, motion by Parker, seconded by Deacon, 4 to 0, with Dr. Noel absent. 20-10/11-3, we voted to deny, motion by Parker, seconded by Deacon, 4 to 0, Dr. Noel absent. In all of these, Dr. Noel was absent. 20-10/11-4, voted to approve the appeal, motion by Parker, seconded by Cordero, 4 to 0, Noel absent. 20-10/11-5, motion denied by Parker, seconded by Deacon, 4 to 0, Dr. Noel absent. 20-10/11-6, motion denied by Parker, seconded by Deacon, 4 to 0, Dr. Noel absent. 20-10/11-7, voted to deny, motion by Parker, seconded by Deacon, 4 to 0, Dr. Noel absent. 20-10/11-8, motion to deny by Parker, seconded by Deacon, 4 to 0, with Noel absent. 20-10/11-9, motion to approve by Parker, seconded by Cordero, 4 to 0, Dr. Noel absent. 20-10/11-10, we postponed till next meeting. 20-10/11-11, motion to deny, seconded by Parker, seconded by Cordero, passed 4 to 0, with Dr. Noel absent. Those were all actions of people from, inter-district transfer requests coming from outside our district, wanting to move into our district schools. Under B3, Public Employee Discipline, Dismissive Release, we had two matters. On the agenda item B3, the board heard two separate matters. One, in the first matter, the board heard and considered personnel complaints against four district administrators relating to three students. The board took action to deny all the complaints based upon a motion by Annette Cordero, seconded by Susan Deacon. The vote was four in favor with Dr. Noel abstaining. In the second matter, the board heard and considered a separate personnel complaint against a district administrator involving another student. The board took action to deny the complaint upon the motion of Ed Herron and seconded by Kate Parker, as a vote of four in favor with Dr. Noel abstaining. B4, Casey waivers.
Help me, who made the motion? Mrs. Parker?
I made the motion.
Motion by Parker, seconded by Cordero, to approve the Casey waivers for graduation for students with disabilities. B5, Public Employee Appointment, nothing to report out.
And the vote on?
Oh, and the vote was?
Was 5-0.
5 to 0, on the Casey waivers.
We're not a public comment yet.
B5, Public Employee Appointment, nothing to report out at this time. Public comments, C4.
Okay, at this time, the public may speak on items that are either not on the agenda but are under the purview of the board, or items that are on our consent agenda. However, to do, you have three minutes to address both items. So, some of you have submitted two speaker slips, but we only have three minutes for both of them.
Well, you're too conservative.
Yes, but the, but public comment includes the consent agenda. So, you have three minutes to make your public comment and also comment on D10. And you'll be followed by Edna Trujillo, who will be followed by Lauren Mason.
Well, this catches me a little off guard, because one of my concerns is, every day I go out into the district and I see incredible stuff that makes this week possible. I see people helping children with incredible problems. But after the FICMAT last year, when it talked about retaliation, and after the report on having openness of the Santa Barbara School District, I'm here to report that it is not happening, okay? In my 17 years, in the last five years, it is very sad not to see a value-driven goals like Marlboro presented today, and that we all can openly discuss them, and I'm going to give you an example. The example was, as you know, Santa Barbara High School was cited for ADA violations. A lawsuit was filed, a lawsuit was lost by the Santa Barbara School District, and we made incredible financial commitment to bringing everything to ADA. So, when I appealed to my administrators, and I'm talking at the cabinet level, I have gone to every administrator, and that's why I'm bringing it before the board. Last year, I sent a memo to Mr. Erickson, he rightfully kicked it to David Hetjung. The health office at Santa Barbara High is not, was not ADA accessible. It has not been for years, and the tradition of this district is to not deal with it. I mean, the wonderful things that happen are great, but there's some things that are messy and need to be dealt with. Mr. Hetjung went to Santa Barbara High, went to Adams, went to all these schools, and the response back to me is, they were indeed ADA accessible. Now, I don't know if he tried to get a wheelchair in those bathrooms, but if, I highly recommend that the board goes and sits on a cot at Monroe, or Galida Valley, or Adams, or Santa Barbara High, and try to get into the bathroom through a wheelchair. That's the test of accessible. Now, what happened is, me as an employee?
One minute.
Those children weren't protected. So, I got a call from a lawyer from San Francisco saying, I'm, I hear you're upset about ADA accessibility. And I said, yes, I am. Do you know the position that that puts me into as an employee? Now, the other item, D10, Michelle Melendez, you're being asked to appoint as lead nurse. She sat on the interview committee for everybody who interviewed for the position. She was the least educated, the least with administrative, but was picked because she does not stand up for the students. I don't know when it's finally going to end. I'm counting the days, but when I hear people say they don't want to go downtown, we still have some serious problems, and I feel for the students who aren't smiling at those graduations, who can't get to the bathroom or vomit because they're wheelchair, or staff who have to report to a lawyer to get something done. And then the people who are chosen to work with this administration won't stand up for the students. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pentland. Edna Trujillo? Ms. Trujillo, you also will have three minutes to address both items D10 and D12.
Right now, both?
Both, yes.
Okay. Yeah, no, that was. Well, the reason because I'm here is just to make aware the board that some of the decisions that you have been taking in the past, or, yeah, practically in the past, could be based on true facts, and I have examples, you know. I resigned to be an employer of the school district on April 30th, and you, the board, approved that. However, I still got my invitation for this meeting for my brief notice, which I wasn't, my name wasn't taken away from the system. And this is related completely with the seniority list that was approved by you on 2007, where I had a position as a teacher at Las Flores that I got on 2006, and on 2007, I had the same seniority number, but it happened to be that the district made mistakes, and they revised the seniority list just three, four months ago, and they erased all my seniority years, and I got a pink slip for that. So, this proves that when you approved this information, it was based on mistakes, negligent mistakes, because this changed my life, and the district keeps making mistakes, putting my name where it doesn't supposed to be, and receiving information that is confidential for my coworkers that I shouldn't be receiving because I didn't want to go for the hearing, and they include me, and not only that, but I got a full check this last month, and when you already had approved my resignation. So, inconsistent mistakes that can impact the life of employers and personnel, it's giving you the information that should be revised, should be imperfect, you know, updated, and it's not. So, I'm happy that I have a new job, but it?
Thirty seconds.
This also can, you know, if my new boss sees the public information, and she can tell me, I mean, you told us that you resigned, and how come you are still, you know, part of them? So, I just want to be, make you be aware that the district is putting you papers that might not be true. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trujillo. Lauren Mason, followed by Carolyn Renard.
Good evening. At the last board meeting, Dr. Noel and Mr. Herron voted to approve the Race to the Top Memorandum of Understanding that Dr. Sarvas had sent to the state. I want to thank them for supporting the students in this district with that vote. Unfortunately, board members Deacon, Cordero, and Parker voted to withdraw that memo, and our district will now not be participating in Race to the Top 2, or be eligible for any federal funds awarded to the state under this program. I don't know who they were supporting with that vote, but it wasn't the students. I guess that they don't understand that the journey is as important as the destination, and even if our state was not awarded funds in round two, the participation would bring about needed changes that would benefit our students. I would think that the similar schools report would be enough to encourage some of our board members to want to participate, but I guess not. In the past, I've spoken about the lack of district-wide policies and procedures concerning teachers' review and returning of students' work in a timely manner. This is now the second time in three years that my daughter has turned in essay papers and not received them back. This year, she still has not seen her last two essays. It is really hard to not make the same mistakes and improve when you don't get your previous work back. With class sizes increasing this year, it will be more important than ever to conduct meaningful reviews of teachers and principals, something that the district may have benefited from by participating in the Race to the Top. I also hope that this year, the district will mandate the use of a single grading software district-wide, and that principals and teachers will be held accountable for using this tool. But let's look at the bright side. All children under the age of 18 could get a federally funded free lunch all summer long, served at four of our district schools. I guess that this is a federal program that some board members feel is politically correct to participate in. I've already received three phone calls from the district about this program, and I think I understand that there is a free lunch program after three calls. What I don't understand is why three board members feel we should not participate in Race to the Top 2. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. Carolyn Renard? Again, Ms. Renard, you have three minutes to address items D5 and D12.
You're violating my Brown Act rights and those of the previous speakers. It's very likely that D12 is going to be pulled for discussion, and we won't be able to discuss it because we will have already had to address it during public comment. Mr. Herron said he was going to change this unfair policy a long time ago, and, Mr. Herron, you haven't done anything about it.
It's by understanding, when an item is pulled, the speaker can speak on it.
Yeah, but by then, the people might have, well, left because they made their comments already a public comment. This is an illegal policy. You're violating these people's Brown Act rights, and you're violating mine now. I'm going to speak on D12 when it's pulled later. You know, you really need to change this policy. Are you going to change it or not?
You've used up almost a minute of your time already.
You know, will you please stop interrupting me? While this district provides a good experience for students with the resources and support to go along with the system, there are still many students, particularly low-income students with disabilities, most of them Hispanic, who are still being denied services. Under Mr. Sarvas's leadership, apparently, the FICMAT report, as devastating as it was about the way that this school treats students with disabilities, has meant nothing. And Mr. Sarvas's attempts to put, push things through on the consent agenda during this meeting are just another sign that, you know, he thinks he can get away with anything. And you know what? You women, including you, Ms. Cordero, you women on this board, we're all elected with the support of the educational political system in this community, and you've done nothing but vote to support the administration ever since you got on the board. Clearly, you know, it's very clear that you're not interested in students' rights or their civil rights, and just want to support the educational establishment and the good old boys' network in this community. And you, as far as I know, you women are mothers, and you really should, shouldn't be doing this to these children. I really hope to see some independent thinking on this board sometime and caring about the students in this district, particularly your most vulnerable students who are being criminalized, and their lives are being destroyed because their rights are being denied, and no one really cares about them. Instead, all there is talk about all the nice things that are going on, well, there's a real underbelly to what's going on here, and kids are dying and suicides are happening because of it. And it's, and you have blood on your hands, especially you women on this board.
Thank you, Ms. Renard.
One comment is, just to be real fair, I work very closely with Dr. Sarvas in preparing the agenda, so we try very hard to do the right thing in accordance with time and topic. Sometimes, there are things that go by that maybe should be on public, should be on action or conference, but we try very hard. So, don't just blame Dr. Sarvas. We work very closely together on that. And there's never, there's never any thought of devious in any way, shape, or form.
Lane Wheeler?
Hello, Lane Wheeler, representing the Santa Barbara Teachers Association. On item D11, this is a partnership agreement with Westmont College. There have been several of these passed in the last couple of weeks, and none of them regard any kind of compensation for master teachers doing more and more work to help tutor student teachers. As you can see from this one, there's record-keeping involved and a number of other duties, and... As you can see from this one, there's record-keeping involved, and a number of other duties, and we have had, have a very, a system that seems to have a lot of flexibility in it. There's no standard reimbursement for master teachers. It's the only profession I know of where you would provide training and instruction for a period of time and receive very little or no compensation. Student teachers do do a lot of work and do serve a lot of our needs in the district, but, once again, there, there was a time 20 years ago when you were not required to do as much record-keeping, to not do the constant monitoring. I just talked to a teacher, a master teacher, who had a student teacher assigned to them against their decision by a principal, and they were having to do videotaping of the student teacher on a regular basis, and couldn't just turn on the videotape and let it run. They had to keep training it onto the teacher. So, they're a student teacher. So, there's a lot of duties that are now in here, and there's no zero compensation. I've heard as much as $300, I've heard as little as $30. There's no consistent rhyme or reason to how reimbursement occurs, and these are colleges. Westmont, I know, is charging 40-something thousand dollars a year, because I have a student, my own daughter, that's thinking about going there next year. And I know it costs a lot to educate kids, but I think it's time for these agencies to be required to create a, a appropriate compensation for the master teacher. And I would ask you to put this on as a board action, and to look at doing something across the board. And I've talked to several of you about some out-of-the-box compensation, but I think we do need to have some sort of dollar amount. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. That concludes public comment.
Okay, C5, acceptance of donations.
Move to approve with appreciation.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, five-zero. The consent agenda. Who wants to pull what items? Mrs. Parker.
I'd like to pull item D1, please. And I recognize that there's been a correction on D1, but unfortunately, there needs to be another correction, too.
Mrs. Parker? Mrs. Deacon?
D3, please.
Dr. Noel? Mrs. Cordero? I'd like to pull D4, D5, D12, D17. Okay, any others?
Move to approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried, five-zero. Action items, E1.
Well, we're pleased to have this item on the agenda tonight. Eric Smith, who negotiated this agreement with the city of Santa Barbara, will make this presentation.
I think you're giving me a little too much credit. I think there is numerous parties involved with this negotiation.
The city council was behind it in our joint meeting, and we certainly were as well.
Yeah, and then I'd also have to credit our general counsel and the city attorney's office, that were significant players in this as well. As you know, last year, after we heard that the city was going to stop funding for crossing guards, we basically negotiated a memorandum of understanding to basically fund it for one year, with the city still carrying out the program. I think we are pretty strong about our position, that we see it as a public safety function, but given the city's fiscal dilemmas and our fiscal dilemma, I think a 50/50 cost-sharing basis for the next three years, probably is about as good as we're going to get. And so, it'd be my recommendation that we approve this. Obviously, there is a cost to the unrestricted general fund. We have already contemplated that in our budget, that you'll see in two weeks, and we've also contemplated it in the multi-year projections as well. So, at this point, it's our recommendation to approve.
Mrs. Deacon?
Hey, Mrs. Parker.
Oh, it's one of those nights, Mr. Heron. And I just want to say how happy I am. Most of all, I think it's regretful that we, we got into this position in the first place. I really appreciate my fellow board members in stepping up to make sure that this program was in place this past year, when the city had completely cut it. But what I appreciate most right now is that this is a three-year agreement, that this really puts in place that we will have crossing guards for the next three years, at which point we can address this again. But I would, I'm just very happy that this is not going to be an annual negotiation and an annual concern for parents and teachers. So, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with the city of Santa Barbara Police Department for the provision of crossing guards for 2010-11 through the 2012-13 school years.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Deacon?
One question I had was, how recently has there been a review of the placement of the guards, and do we know whether this is optimized?
Not recently, and however, we have anecdotal information that the city engineering department did some analysis of those guards, and the data that they gave to us really didn't mean anything, you know? So, it's something that could be reevaluated, but I don't think it, I don't think there's a lot of largesse there, is my feeling about it. One of the other things I probably should point out is that we had a discussion about, you know, so we didn't have to look at this every year. You notice that we put in a CPI each year, which, given what's going on with the economy, we don't think it's going to be a budget buster, so.
I do want to say that during this past year, when we talked with the city about this, the city had a list of the locations, had looked at the locations. We asked them if they, if it was appropriate to pair the locations, if some were safer sites than others. They initially said, "Well, we thought that, that some could be," and then they came back and said, "Well, you know, the list stands." So, that-
Yeah, and I think for liability purposes, they don't want to identify one as being more safe than another, you know, so.
I'd like to thank Mr. Smith, because he's the first one that got me thinking about an extended period of time to three years, and I think that was a very, very good move. I'd like to thank Mayor Snyder for her total support, and other city council people also, and the staff at the city. So, it was really an effort by everybody. And I think public participation was the key behind it all. You know, we don't like to go through those things, but in this case, the public did speak, and our kids spoke, and the teachers spoke, and the parents spoke, and everybody listened. And so, I think it was an important process that we went through, unfortunately, but it had to be. Do I, any others? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried, five-zero, if Dr. Noel says yes.
Crossing guards, Bob.
Okay. Bob, Dr. Noel is a yes vote, five to zero. E2, update on special education and approval of draft priorities for special education.
Board, you'll notice you have an additional attachment that's on the dais there, and Carrie Mills, our director of special education, will make this presentation.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm going to discuss three subjects, and you have the backup for all of them. So, we'll start with special education update and acceptance of the draft priorities for special education. I was reminded that this, the motion was made for acceptance, so my apologies for putting approval. So, you have been hearing about the FICMAT process and the stakeholders for quite some time, so I won't go into extensive background. We have, the stakeholder work group has met formally seven times. We have an eighth meeting scheduled on June the 16th coming up to discuss one item. We have had five different subcommittees, and we have been working in our subcommittee work groups this past year. Those subcommittees briefly are communication, organization, professional development, programs and services, and the vision statement work group. I wanted you to note that the stakeholders did not officially approve the priorities document, but they did approve the expenditures as placeholders. These are placeholders, they're not specific, specifically budget items tied to any one item, but they are placeholders. So, I'd like you to accept the priorities document with one addition, and that addition is on page three. If you'll note that I wanted to make that consistent with the administrative regulation. Page three, on Goal One, improved communication and information structures. On the first item that has to do with rebuilding the special education section of the district website, to include links to stakeholder groups and agencies, I'd like to add, right after agencies, in accordance with Administrative Regulation 1113, so that's consistent with our policy.
1113?
Yes, administrative regulation. I brought it with me, so I, just let me pick it up for you.
Can you address the podium, address the board members and-
I'm sorry. Administrative Regulation 1113 is the district and school websites.
Thank you. We'll get those, make them available. We'll get a copy of that, make it available.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I'm just recommending acceptance of this document, and I'm open to questions.
Questions? Dr. Noel?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, move to approve the draft priorities. I'm reading partially from a statement that, with their associated FICMAT recommendations, by number. And that's, that's one.
That's one motion?
It's a three-part motion.
Okay.
Three-part motion.
A motion. To instruct staff to provide substantial evidence of the implementation status of all FICMAT recommendations by June 30th. And I say that because those cryptic entries in the status column are just that, too cryptic.
Can you read that again, please?
To instruct staff to provide substantial evidence of the implementation status of all FICMAT recommendations by June 30th. And three, to ask the stakeholder's group to organize and prioritize all FICMAT recommendations that do not appear in the 524 draft priorities. And there are some 70 recommendations that do not appear there.
Excuse me, what was the first word before prioritize? To ask the stakeholders' work group to-
Organize and prioritize.
There's no second on that until I can see at this moment, so let's go on with the discussion, and do public comment if there is some. Mrs. Parker?
Obviously, once we, after we make a motion, but before we vote, we can take public comment at that point. And I would like to go ahead and say, first of all, thank you so much to the stakeholders' group for the amazing work that they have been doing, and to our staff. I know that this has been a really thorough and long process, and I just really want to say how much I appreciate the work. And I would like to go ahead to make a motion to accept-
I would like to have public, I'm going to ask for public comment first.
But I'd like to make my motion, Mr. Heron.
Okay.
I can make a motion, it can be seconded or not. At that point, you can take public comment, but I do have the right to make a motion.
My motion, go second.
Yes.
So, I'd like to make a motion to accept the draft priorities for special education with the, with the minor change that Dr. Mills indicated, making sure that the website links are in accordance with our AR1113.
Second.
Public comment.
Carolyn Renard.
And I'd like to ask, Ms. Parker, why would you even want to make a motion before you've heard the public comment? Obviously, you don't care what the public is going to say.
You're using your time.
You couldn't be more clear. Pardon?
You're using your time.
I realize that.
Okay, thank you.
And Ms. Cordero, why would you want to second that motion that was made without public comment? You obviously don't care what the public comment's going to be either. You couldn't be more clear. Very consistent behavior. I'd like to point out that this item is misagendized. You know, Carrie Mills just said, "These are not draft priorities, they're placeholders." Well, are you voting on draft priorities or placeholders? This is agendized as draft priorities, and you've just been told they're not draft priorities. The FICMAT committee did not create these or vote on them as draft priorities. Therefore, you can't vote to accept them. You've just been told that's not what they are. So, this is misagendized, it should have been agendized as voting on place, funds, placeholder categories. So, if you vote on this, it's going to be void as a matter of law, because, you know, you're not voting on what you say you're voting on. These are not draft priorities. You've just been told that, and you've just been told the FICMAT committee did not vote on them being draft priorities. I was at that FICMAT committee meeting when they were just told, "Oh, you've got to just vote on this list of things," that they had no part in creating at this committee. You've got to vote on it so we can save the funds, or else the funds are going to be gone if you don't, if we don't get this submitted by Friday." And this, I believe the meeting was on a Tuesday. And then I find out later, the funds weren't even really going to be lost if the committee didn't vote on it, even though they were told that they were. It was just that some interest was going to have to be paid on them. I mean, the whole thing is a farce, and this whole FICMAT committee is a farce. It's not representative of the community, and it's not a self-selected group of stakeholders. There were people that were excluded that should have been there to be able to speak for those kids who don't have a voice, and they still don't have a voice. You know, this is disgusting, what you people are going along with, and you women. The committee didn't even know how much money they were dealing with. Nobody knew what the amount of money was that they were even-
Thirty seconds.
-voting on to do these placeholder things. It was ridiculous. And, and you people are acting like this is all just well and good and all in order. And you, now you've made this ridiculous motion, and you've gotten a second. Well, you know, it's really sad. It's sad for the kids. I suppose it's not so sad for you people, you get to sit up there and act like you are doing the right thing, when we all know you're not, and you don't care.
Thank you, Ms. Renard. Deborah Pentland.
Hi. I applied to be on the FICMAT routine after 17 years and was rejected, because I don't work with the union well enough, or the district. So, there, there is some merit about taking information and facing what is wrong. And this week, an empire took responsibility and got national news. I find that sad, and I'm not sure it happens at our level, and it's very sad. Of all the FICMAT recommendations, I would like to include another, because I didn't have the option to be there in what I've seen in 17 years. Regular educators have a law on their plate. They work hard, and I watch them do fantastic. But the special ed students and the counselors who try to get, find classes for special ed students are constantly rebuffed, because they can't handle the workload they have. And I'm going to give you a story this week that, that happened in the last three weeks- And I'm going to give you a story this week that happened in the last three weeks. A student at Santa Barbara High wanted to take art, a special ed student, but none of the teachers wanted to take him in the class. So the counselors decided to put him in swimming, but he had a seizure disorder. He had been put in swimming, and the special ed teacher said, "That's all they would give us, that's all they would take him." Students should not be placed. Not only did he not get the classes he wanted, he was placed with his life in jeopardy. To put a seizure student in a swimming class to avoid them having access to regular education is not expectable. I accept a loud and clear direction from our highest administration that all our students are to be taught by all our teachers, and if they need help and support and training, fine. But I've seen over and over how many children are rejected because of their special needs. And the counselors know, "Oh, this teacher will take him, this teacher won't, this teacher will take him, this teacher won't." So this year, we had a student with seizure put in swimming to avoid assignment to a regular education teacher. Please put that on the FICMAT list.
Thank you, Ms. Pentland. Catherine Abarca?
I know that this board cares about what happens to our kids. I know that all the stakeholders who participated care very much about what happens in the school district. I know that we all wouldn't have been there every single meeting and participated in every single FICMAT prioritization if we didn't. I would ask you all to say that you appreciate what we did by also including the fact that the FICMAT report is 153 items. It's not just the priority items that we're looking at tonight, it's the entire ball of wax. I think that we're remiss and we're dismissing the balance of the items. I think that's what people kind of feel like, and some of those items are extremely important. Some of the other things that are not recognized are the staff retaliation, parent retaliation, whether it's real or perceived, doesn't really matter because it does exist. Then we've got the fact that we pick and choose what FICMAT thinks we're going to prioritize and which ones we're not. Where's the ombudsman? That's in the FICMAT report. When we hire people, FICMAT gave us very clear direction as to how we should hire them and what their qualifications should be, but we don't look at that, we just kind of hire them if they look like they're kind of like that. So what I'm trying to say is that we can't just pick and choose. The FICMAT report is what it is, it's 153 items, we paid over $60,000 for it, so we better make a good judgment about what we're going to do. I think accepting the priority list is really important for us to go forward, I agree. But that doesn't mean that the rest of them get buried in the dust. So if we're going to accept the priorities, let's at least have some kind of plan for the rest of the balance that remain, whether it be that the board realizes that there's a balance left and that we will attend to it, and, you know. There has to be some action made on those other items as well, because some of them are quite important. I mean, some of them are very important. We're now going to talk about hiring a new student services person, but what about 504 and home hospice? And how's our executive director, who's already shorthanded, going to handle 504 and home hospice too? And make change, and attend IEPs, and do due processes? I mean, you know, we're really, I think, not looking at the larger picture here. So we all want to help, we all want to collaborate, we all want to see this come to an end, and we all want to have a great special ed program, and we want to have a general ed, special, great programs too. We want people to want to come here because this is the best place for them to be.
Thirty seconds.
We can't do that until we resolve the problems. Look what's going on in our golf right now. Somebody just needs to do the right thing, and that's what we're asking for you to do. So please don't dismiss those other items, please include them in some way in your motion. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Abarca. Lourdes Ribe?
Public comments are closed.
I appreciate the opportunity to be here again and visit with you. I went to juvenile court yesterday with my, with my little kid. I learned a lot listening to the judge, and I still don't understand, I don't know the, I need to take a class at City College, maybe about government, or who knows what, but I told, I think it's morally wrong that kids who have no record of misbehavior or anything are sent to juvenile court just for that. And I was told by principals that, you know, they don't normally do that. My kid was an unlucky one that went to juvenile court. Since my son was sent to juvenile court, other kids have come to me, and the stories are really, really sad. You know, the kids that are turned to juvenile court, when a lot of kids are found off school campus, that is the law, they need to be in school, cycle of school, are, the whites are let go, and the Latino kids get to juvenile court. That's what we see, you know, 10 kids in juvenile court, one Anglo, like some of you, and a lot, a lot of brown skin like myself and my son. I think there's something, the judge told me to go and change the law, so I'm researching about how to go in. He said it's a county law or some sort of law outside the schools. It seems like two agencies are working together with this law, and it's really damaging our kids, because some kids, my kid is lucky enough to have a good home environment, some sort of support outside, but I hear that kids, when they get like that, they get discriminated because they don't participate in sports. They get discriminated, they don't make it to the teams, they don't have much to go forward in school, they start misbehaving, they leave school. Just put yourselves in these little kids' shoes. You know, you are discriminated because of who you are, they get angry, they get upset, they get into juvenile, and then some of them commit suicide. We're talking about law. I think, I think there's the law of the land, but I also think that there is a higher law, the law of God. God is going to make us accountable for what we're doing with the lives of these children. So I please, I beg you to think about the lives of these kids. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ribe. That concludes public comment.
Can you repeat your motion, Mrs. Parker?
All right. And I also want to stress that when you make a motion according to Robert's rules, one of the great outcomes of using Robert's rules is that you frame the discussion, and then you can be a lot more productive and more efficient. You can always amend, you can always withdraw, but that's why we usually don't follow Robert's rules in terms of the order, but frankly, we would probably get through our agendas much more quickly if we did. My, a, my motion was to accept the draft priorities for special education that was created by the Stakeholders Work Group with the minor revision of making sure that the first bullet on the district website conforms with the language that Mrs. Mills, or Dr. Mills suggested. And I do that in the complete understanding that Dr. Mills and everybody here understands that this is a large FICMAT report, this is simply the priorities list that the stakeholders group approved.
They did not approve it, but...
Sorry, didn't approve, they created, in the sense that they came up with all the things that are on that list. So, oh, I want to be, I want to be clarified.
Staff produced this list.
Staff produced the list, but every item on that list was discussed by the stakeholders group, correct, Dr. Mills?
The list has been in the hands of the stakeholders group since January. So don't let anybody tell me that the stakeholders group doesn't know what's in that document.
And the stakeholders group set the priorities by breaking into committees and identifying those things that ended up on this list, so they definitely were part of setting these priorities.
One question I have, Mrs. Parker, is what do you mean by accept the draft priorities? Does that turn them into our priorities, or do they remain draft priorities?
I guess if you want me to reward that, so that accept the proposed priorities, you know, do you want me to...
Accept them as our priorities.
Yeah, they become our priorities. When we accept them, that transforms them.
And the word "draft" comes off.
And the word "draft" comes off.
Okay, I wanted to make sure of that. Mrs. Deacon?
I wanted to address this notion, and Dr. Noel actually raised it, I think, about the implementation and evaluation. The stakeholders group at the last meeting voted to complete an action plan within three months, and that action plan is going to be created using software that absolutely, project management software, that absolutely will identify the implementation, the timeline, and the evaluation piece. So I'm not concerned that that's not going to happen, I'm firmly convinced that it will happen as a part of that process.
Dr. Noel?
Ms. Parker, there are, there are 23 cells in the table that you were recommending, that you're proposing we adopt, each one being labeled an action required, and then they're categorized into well-known categories about communication, professional development, programs and services, and organization structures. Okay? So there are 23 items. One question I have is, do you mean them to be equal in priority, because you're not just differentiating whether some are more important than others? That's one question.
Correct.
I have another question to follow.
Yes.
You do mean.
That's what I mean.
They're equal, okay.
These are out of, I assume, the 153, these are the 23 that the stakeholders group have been working on, these are top priorities.
Well, next, can I comment on that? I mean, the reality is that those 23 contain about 80, 80-plus of the 153 recommendations.
Yes, and thank you, Mr. Heron, because, I mean, I didn't go through and count, but it is listed on each one that...
Yeah, so each one of the 23 contains several recommendations within.
And that's my next question. Do you, in, does your proposal include each of these FICMAT references?
I want to be really clear that my motion was to accept this draft priorities plan. So this is not my personal proposal, Dr. Noel, but I certainly would like to make a motion to accept the priorities plan that we have in front of us with a minor revision that was suggested by Dr. Mills.
And that was seconded by...
Do you mean all words on these pages, then?
Yes.
So, so if I'm reading it correctly, then, let's just take one for example. On the page six, the next to the bottom row, row four, the action required is develop, publish, and distribute following special education, the following special education documents, colon, district policies, procedures, teacher handbook, instructional aid handbook, and so on. And then it lists, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, you know, a dozen or more FICMAT recommendations. And those FICMAT recommendations take, you know, really take quite a bit of space, and each one, you know, has content. Are they then also included?
I, well, maybe Dr. Mills can address that better, because...
Maybe I can clarify it a little bit.
It seems to me that those just are references to, the action required is what is the priority, and those numbers are references to where that action may be referred to.
Right. Dr. Miller, Dr. Carol Miller drafted this document, and it's very similar to the one that she drafted on January the 12th as well. And what she did, when she worked over the break with Marilyn Lauer to look at all of the recommendations, and she eliminated the duplicates. So there were a lot of things that they felt were duplicates, and so they tried to put everything into the category that it pertained to by condensing. And so a lot of these are condensed, and the FICMAT numbers are listed under those objectives. And they were also, my understanding is, she took the recommendations from each committee that were the priorities of those subcommittees.
I'd like to add that I have in front of you the 1 to 153 recommendations that relate to all those numbers. And the one suggestion I would have, and I think Robin and Ms. Waskey and Dr. Mills can do it very simply, is create a document that spells out, rather than just the numbers, have the next column show what each item is.
Yes.
And I think that's a supportive, so we don't have to go from one document to another, we can have a document that spells out each of those categories. Now, if you want to have that as part of the motion, Dr. Noel, that was one of your points, but I think they're going to do it automatically.
Well, my motion is, I mean, I certainly concur with that, and...
If you want to amend the motion.
I didn't amend the motion, I'm asking Mrs. Parker what her motion means.
Right.
Yeah. Organizational structure, row one, this would be one of the 23. Develop an organizational chart to include the roles and responsibilities of the special education staff and chain of command. Now, when I go across this document, I find that that is listed as a completed job, okay? But then when I read the content of those eight or 10 FICMAT recommendations, I read such things as, and this is all, mind you, under a rubric called Organization Chart, establish the parameters of authority for educational leadership. I can see the relation of that to a chart, but that's a rather pregnant statement that I would argue is not done justice by a diagram. The next one, define the roles and responsibilities of principals and district special education administration, that's a major piece of the work.
Ms. Renard, can you, excuse me, one second. Ms. Renard, can you move away from the podium, please?
I wanted to ask for permission to address you briefly about an agenda problem with this item.
Can you move to the, Dr. Noel has the floor.
And then, and another one under that organization chart rubric, develop strategies to ensure that the environment in special education is open and transparent to minimize fear of retaliation. Now, those are, those are in FICMAT's report, very big issues, and I know that they're of concern to many of us, that they be addressed thoroughly and fairly. When I just read, develop an organization chart to include roles and responsibilities, and then I read that that job's done, we didn't have that discussion. And all this is a long way of asking you, do you intend by your motion that these spelled out, the full text of these FICMAT recommendation, these numbers, be included in the priorities?
And, Dr. Noel, I think I just commented that you can either amend your motion to do that, or take our word for it, that staff will do that.
Well, I just want to get an answer from her as a courtesy, and if she says, she says no, then maybe I can make an amendment.
I, I think that maybe Dr. Mills should clarify again, because what I'm hearing is sort of a misinterpretation both of the graph that you see here, and what it means that these numbers are on the chart. Because when I see a reference, it doesn't mean that every single item on number six is going to be completed by develop, publish, and distribute. There may be 10 parts to number six, but this is referring that it, and when I see completed on your chart going across, that's not the, on your...
Well, this is the...
Your large, okay.
I need bigger chart.
Yes, it's, it's on developing an organizational chart, it's not on absolutely every piece of those.
But, but you see, the problem I have with it is that, if I look here on this, at that box, it says develop the organization chart, and this is on the document that you want to adopt every word of, I go over three columns, four columns, and it says completed.
Well, they have...
And yet, and yet, when I read all those references that you also have included in your motion, it is clear that they are not completed, and there's an internal inconsistency. And, and, see, I, for me, the solution is that the motion should say that all of these things are part of the priority and part of the job now.
And by including all the numbers, under each priority, they are, and they will be spelled out so we can see them specifically. Mrs. Cordero?
Well, I would like to suggest that we could just stipulate that we will read this chart as we normally read documents that make reference to, for example... as we normally read documents that make reference to, for example, ed code, state law, et cetera, where we do not interpret a citation. I just think it's a matter of the standard way of reading citations. We do not interpret a citation as meaning that that quote is all-inclusive of that entire section of the ed code. It simply means that that statement would be included under that particular piece. So here, where it says, develop an organizational chart, and it lists all the FICMAT recommendations, it simply means that developing an organizational chart would be included in those particular items. It's not meant to mean that developing an organizational chart is all-inclusive of everything in those items. And I think that's just standard citation.
Well, Mrs. Cordero, these are not, this is not a textbook, and these are not footnotes, and nor are these education code clauses. These are FICMAT recommendations.
But what I'm asking is, can we just stipulate that we will read it as we read standard citations?
Again, I'd like to see a document created that shows the action required, and the next column over showing each of the items spelled out that that action encompasses.
Right, I can do that.
And the intent is that everything, all those numbers, eventually, we're going to have to complete one-hundred-and-fifty-three items. You know, so we're going to have a yes or no on one-hundred-and-fifty-three items, are they completed? And so just the word completed on one of these columns doesn't mean a heck of a lot, but it's a general idea. But again, I think we'll get the document without an amendment to the motion, but if somebody wants to amend the motion to include that, that's fine, too. The other comment I would have, you know, even though you say it's in accordance with policy AR such and such.
Yes.
That doesn't mean that if in the wisdom of staff, that policy should be changed, that you can't recommend changes. So I would hope you would look at that policy in light of today's world and say, hey, does it cover everything? So just by adding that, to me, doesn't mean that you can't go off and use some judgment and come back with changes if that's what staff desires.
Okay.
Dr. Noel?
Please.
I just want to reiterate that we are going to get an action plan, and so I don't want to be creating a second step here for staff that we know is already on the pathway to being created. And I don't know how much time and effort it takes to put together this secondary...
It'll take five minutes.
You can do it very quickly.
Five seconds.
Five seconds.
It's done, okay.
We just have to get it out of PDF.
All right, so I don't see a need for a motion for that.
Staff would not distribute it.
Okay, I don't see a need for a motion for that, then, because apparently it is already done. And I'm, again, I'm just looking forward to this action plan, so I am ready to call the question.
Is there any, well, call for the question. On the call for the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Call for the question is passed.
I'm sorry.
Call for the question is passed. Now, on the main motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I really was back on call for the question. I really wanted to vote against calling the question because I felt discussion had not been completed.
Okay, so it's four to, at this moment, it's four to zero. Dr. Noel?
I vote to continue the discussion.
So you vote no, or you abstain?
I vote no on call to question.
No, that's passed. We passed that. Do you vote no on the main motion?
Could I have the motion repeated, please?
Accept the...
Priorities.
For special, no, I'm not going to try. Special education, and then with the minor change to the, regarding administrative policy on the one item in general. That's not the specific.
Is the understanding that Mrs. Parker, the mover, has provided that these are all equal priority, is that included in the motion?
I think that is.
I explained that it is not included in the motion.
It's not included, because by definition it is.
It is, yeah. Because these don't have...
They have never been prioritized other than...
And that, and that the full text of this document, including the reference numbers, is what we're voting to approve?
Yes.
Including the reference numbers?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Herron, may I make a brief comment?
No.
She's tacked on a whole new program at Santa Barbara Junior High to the vote.
No, we've been through a public comment.
Occupational therapy program was being brought in. Are you voting on that, too?
No, this is, no, it's not. There's three, there's three separate items. This is the first one. The other two, we haven't talked about. There are three, okay?
My, under those two understandings, which I take it to be included in the meaning of the motion, I vote yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion passed five to zero. I would like, unless Dr. Noel wants to make a motion on his third item, I'll make it if you don't.
Go ahead, please.
I would like to request that all the, I'd like to move that all the items not on the priorities list be reviewed and evaluated, determine if times have changed, and if any should be considered as priorities and added to the list.
Second.
Second.
You win. Let's mix it up.
I'll second that. Could I ask for some explanation about what you mean?
Well, there's seventy items, and there's various explanations as to why they weren't included in the priorities. Some were duplicates, some just weren't deemed appropriate or not necessary at the time. I forget, there was, I saw three different reasons. Some were that, hey, they're already being done, so let's not include them. And I'd just like to have the ones that aren't on there, there's seventy, about seventy of them, looked at. I mean, five of them relate to an advisory council. You know, so I think they need to be looked at and determined after a year, have they all of a sudden become important? They might not have been important a year ago. You know, one of them's the ombudsman. You know, it wasn't deemed important.
I guess I'm confused about what the priorities list is versus what an action plan, the action plan that's coming.
Well, we haven't voted on the action plan.
I know, but that's coming in three months, but I thought that we were going to, that those seventy that you're referring to, I thought that we needed to address them all still.
Right now, they're not part of the priorities.
Well, not part of the priorities, but it doesn't mean it's not part of the action.
But they're not on that sheet.
Well, right, they're not, because they're not a priority.
They're nowhere then.
Mrs. Cordero.
Can I suggest that we wait on an update on the remaining items until after we've seen the action plan?
Is my anticipation...
Mrs. Deacon.
That those items will be addressed in the action plan. So even though they're not on the priorities list, I mean, the advisory council, we know, is going to be addressed in the action plan. So I'm, you know, I'm not fearful about those things being addressed in the, not being addressed in the action plan.
I mean, all those things, they all have to be discussed and fleshed out. Dr. Noel?
I have before me a list of all of the items that are not included in the thing that we just voted on, and it's, there's seventy-some items. Let me, I have them also categorized by some of the, by substance, some of the things we left out. There are no, none at all, nothing addressing FICMAT recommendations, one oh seven, one oh nine, one oh eight, one ten, one eleven, one thirteen, one fourteen, all of which have to do with student study teams and response to intervention.
Yeah, can we, yeah, can we just assume that the seventy should be looked, and the motion says to look at those and determine if any should be included in the priorities? Take another, take another look after a year.
Yeah, I'm just, are you asking me, or?
No, I'm just...
I guess...
May I go, let me, may I use the remainder of my two moments here? Mission and philosophy statements. We have a very nice vision statement. The FICMAT report calls for a mission and philosophy statement. There are, recommendation one oh five is in what we just approved, but recommendation one oh two, one oh three, one oh four relate to it, and they are not. Budget and finance, there is nothing, nothing in there related to budget and finance, and FICMAT has one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine recommendations with regard to budget and finance. That's on this page. If I may say one more thing, because we have such a fixation with FICMAT numbers, and have become so, in some sense, mechanistically driven by them, we have lost sight of some of the big issues that FICMAT raised in the executive summary. They include such things as the instability of leadership related to the core problem of our district, the confusion and disorganization of roles and site roles.
Dr. Noel, this is...
Et cetera.
I don't think this is related to the motion.
What?
I don't think that's related to the motion. I'm going to rule this not related to the motion.
I'm just saying there's...
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff.
Stuff is left out. It is substantively very significant.
That part, that is part of talking to the motion, because I think we need to look at that stuff.
Okay.
Mrs. Parker?
I guess my concern, and maybe Dr. Mills can address this, is that, again, we're asking staff to duplicate work. Because what it says here is, on May twenty-four, twenty-ten, the Stakeholders Group approved the completion of an action plan within three months. This plan would be more specific than the priorities for special education, which I see as things that are, need to be implemented immediately, within the next few weeks. The action plan would outline all essential elements and tasks and persons involved in the implementation of the prioritized FICMAT recommendations, as well as evaluation indicators and/or results. Now, Dr. Mills, with the action plan and what you're coming up over the next three months, was that intended to address the entire FICMAT report? Or, or, I mean, are you going to address the entire FICMAT report, or is this something that needs to be addressed separately? Like, do we need to revisit the priorities plan that we've just accepted?
I believe that the entire FICMAT report would be addressed.
Then would you, I'd like to make, look, and move to make an amendment to your motion.
Would you reread what you just read, where it specifically says, an action plan for the priorities?
Of the prioritized FICMAT recommendations?
Yeah, so that's, that's what that motion says, is to prioritize, not the other seventy.
So, but you, everything, you're going to, I guess I want to ask Dr. Mills, are you going to address at some point not just the priorities, but the entire FICMAT report?
Well, I think there are many items on the not included list, as Mr. Herron pointed out, that are very important. So I think it is a good exercise to look at that again with current staff and make sure that we have, we have those items back into the forefront. But it's not that we would just not look at them if they weren't on the priorities.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. President, would you repeat the motion that's on the floor?
I think it is to move that all items not on the priorities list be reviewed and evaluated, determine if times have changed, and if they should be considered as priorities and added to the list.
May I be recognized to make, amend the motion?
Surely.
To delete the parts, oh, boy, the last few, the last few lines. I want to amend it to the effect that this will be done as part of the work on the action plan. That the review of the, the review of the recommendations that are not included in the prior action be included in, the organization prioritizing and so on, be included in the action plan work to be done in two months.
When I had you first, when you first said it, you said, asked that the Stakeholders Work Group would organize and prioritize the FICMAT recommendations not in the priorities.
Yeah, but I didn't get anywhere with that motion.
No, but then we could add as part of the action plan.
I'm working with Mr. Herron's motion. I'm trying to work on this.
He has a different one.
I'm happy to remove my motion, but keep in mind that none of those...
I just want to tie your motion to the action plan.
Well, you know, those three motions by Stakeholder Group have not been approved yet. And I, you know, it's hard to me to say do an action plan on priorities. To me, that's, they should be working on the priorities we just approved. And all of a sudden, you're saying, oh, by the way, those are priorities, but go ahead and work on the others, too. I think, all I'm saying is that I think staff should look at the priorities. I mean, by this motion, is the staff look at the seventy items and determine if they think any should be added to the priorities that would have preference in the action plan development. Mrs. Cordero?
Ms. Mills, Dr. Mills, can I just ask you a question?
Sure.
If we didn't have this motion, would you still look at those other priority, at those other items?
We would be looking at all of the items.
So this, this motion is unnecessary, I mean, in terms of what you are planning to do?
I think as the, as the committee chair for the Program and Services Committee, Subcommittee, for example, I was using the priorities document to focus the committee's work. And so I was using those items. And so I think it does give us focus, and we can, and we can, you know, have those as benchmarks.
My question is, if we don't pass this motion, if we didn't have a motion, you would still be doing this, you would still be looking at them?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But, I'm sorry, that's not what you just said. You said you're focused on the priorities.
I'm focusing on the, the subcommittees have been focused on the priorities, yes.
And if your judgment that some of the other items should be added to that focus, wouldn't that be good?
We could certainly relook at that, as I said, yes.
Mrs. Parker?
I guess my only concern with your motion is that by saying, again, that these might need to be added to the priorities list, when in fact, they just need to be implemented, and not on this priority list, that you're, again, putting us back in the position where, okay, well, three more go on the priorities list, but then what do you do with the sixty-seven? So I just expect implementation of everything. And so I, I can see asking staff to look at everything and see if there are things that maybe need to be prioritized also, but I just want to be sure that we're not excluding anything, then.
But you're thinking that there, of those seventy, there might be some that are higher than priority, that should be doing...
No, I'm just, but you're telling me that if they're not on the priorities list, then they're, Dr. Noel's telling me, then they're nowhere. And I want to be sure that they're somewhere.
I'm just saying that some of them may be somewhere.
That the board has taken...
Mrs. Cordero?
I thought that the reason we asked to bring, have the priorities brought back to us to accept, rather than to approve, was to avoid this entire, this whole kind of discussion that we're having right now. And we specifically said, we don't want to go back to the beginning, we don't want to haggle over every single item, we want to be able to move forward because this is already dragged out way too long. So if, I mean, I would rather just call the question and vote it up or down and move on.
Did you call the question?
Yes.
Can you read the motion one more time?
The motion is to move that all items not on the priorities list be reviewed and evaluated, determine if times have changed, and if any should be considered as priorities and added to the list. Very simple motion. It won't take a heck of a lot of time.
And then you're not entertaining amendment?
No, I, no amendment was made that was passed.
Somebody has asked for the, for the call, you called the question.
Oh, call for the question, yeah. But I don't think there was any amendment to that motion that was discussed, but I don't think any amendment got a second. Yeah, all those in favor of calling for the question, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All in favor?
Oh, calling for the question, I'm sorry, yes.
All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. No?
No.
Motion passes three to two.
Would you read, would you read again what we just voted for and passed?
I moved, I did. You voted no on it. It's not midnight yet. I moved that all items not on the priorities list be reviewed and evaluated, determine if times have changed, and if any should be considered as priorities and added to the list.
Okay, so I just want to say I voted no, not because I don't think that should be done, because I think that's going to be done anyways, and I think we make silly motions.
Then I agree with Mrs. Cordero on that one.
Thank you for calling me silly, that's good. I've been, I've been called a lot worse. Dr. Noel?
Nothing personal, Mr. Herron.
I'm looking at the issue before us, the report before us, May twenty-fourth, and I'm concerned that it is misleading with respect to how much work has been done. And I'm wondering if we can ask to have staff give us a report about the, a current status report for each of the FICMAT recommendations. As I pointed out in one, clearly, the work hasn't been done, and yet it says it's completed. And it's been one... And, and it's been one of the great frustrations of this whole process, that we have reports from staff that say, oh, we've done that, and, and yet, we have no cumulative kind of listing of what, where we stand, what's been done, what hasn't been done. We know work's been done, we know that staff have been doing good work.
Mrs. Deacon?
I would prefer to give staff time to work, to focus on the action plan. And I, I think it's time to just get down to do that, and rather than continue to ask them to draft reports. And it's, we're now forty minutes behind schedule, I'd like to move on to E3.
Well, we should have two more items to discuss on this item. I, I think I would join Dr. Noel in, at some point, finding out where we stand on all hundred and fifty-three items. We had an attempt at that back in November, that has not been carried on. But at some point, we need to know, item by item, what we've done, and maybe the action plan will do that if we go that way. But at some point, that'd be very important to know where we stand. I think staff agrees with that.
But I, I want to say it a little more strongly, because I find it very disconcerting, as an, as an elected member of the public, to read a report that I know contains untruth, okay, about, about work, claims that work is done that I know, in fact, has not been done. And I think that we owe that to, to the public and to ourselves, to have that tally, and that's why I asked that question.
And I, and I hope that all of us, when we see that, we let Carrie, Dr. Mills, know, because I'm sure that's very important to her, too. And it's very misleading when you see there's fifteen items, and it says completed, you have no idea what, which of the fifteen items, so it makes it harder. So, there is validity, okay. You have two more items on this agenda that you wanted to discuss.
May I, may I address that issue? Yes, Board, please, if you do see something like that, simply let her know, but please give her time to do the work that needs to get done on the action plan.
Yeah. You wanted to discuss, for information purposes, the Junior Path Finders Program proposal?
Yes.
Public comment was not allowed on this issue. I'd like to sign up for public comment on this agenda. I mean, it wasn't agenda. So, I wasn't able to sign up for public comment, and I would like to do that.
It was, it was in the agenda, it was published on the Internet.
Where is it on the agenda?
It's not on the agenda.
Where is it on the agenda? It's not on there. She tried to stick it in under this one. It's on the same attachment as the FICMAT stuff. It's on the very back.
Special education update.
Actually, no.
It's not on the agenda.
It doesn't say, it says special education update. But I would agree with you, because it's not...
It's on, look on the E2 attachment, it's on the back of the E2 attachment, it says it's part of the FICMAT recommendation.
No, it's not part of the recommendations.
I know. But that's what it says. Look at what Carrie Mills wrote about it.
It says, it says, it says special education update.
It says draft priority for special education. She's trying to stick it in, and it's not a just agenda item, it's a Brown Act violation. And if you're going to hear it anyway, it's not agenda.
Is, is, can you please sit down? Can you please sit down? Is there a time element on these two items? Can they go to the next meeting?
You be quiet. Don't talk to me.
Mr. Case, Mr. Price, please.
These are information items.
Okay, when I read this, I have to be honest, I almost wrote an email saying, was the agenda item sufficient to cover these two items? So, I did, that did go through my mind, and I don't, because I, I didn't see anything on the agenda that talked about these two items, even though special education update, you know, might have been all inclusive, but it wasn't specific.
Ms., Mr. Heron, we have legal counsel here who can weigh in, but you've lost a good part of the board. Maybe we can take a quick break.
Okay, it's nine o'clock, we'll come back at nine-ten. Items, one regarding the Junior Path Finders Program, and one providing a notice of intent to take back OT. Purely as information update, in writing, which is what we've asked for, we appreciate it very much. Do everything in general to say about those two items, will they be coming back to us at some point as action items?
Actually, no, I was bringing them as information items, I just wanted to let you know what we've been working on. These are items that I didn't believe I needed approval to move forward on, so I was just moving forward on those items, and I was bringing you this for just information as to what we've been working on.
Okay, and you're working closely with Mrs. Swawsky and...
Very closely.
Okay. Any questions?
Well, I, I would just want to say, as a member of the Program Committee, we, we did discuss this notion of taking back occupational therapy, and, and we, the district stands to save money by doing it, and, and I, so I fully support it, and I'm, I'm glad that you're thinking ahead, and have already laid the groundwork for this.
And I, I would just like to say that, that the fiscal part of it was really not my motivation, and I'm looking at just providing the quality of service and having employees that we can supervise and so on, to have part of our staff, as opposed to just contracting with an outside agency.
Thank you, Dr. Mills. Just to alert, we probably will not get to item F2, Comprehensive Gang Prevention. Mr. Gonzalez, we probably won't get to that, okay?
Oh, man, really? That's a good one.
E3, approval, moving to SISC3 Anthem.
Eric Smith, our Deputy Superintendent, will make this report. Thank you.
Yeah, I probably should do a better job of spelling out those acronyms. That CISC stands for Self-Inured Schools of California. So, every year, starting in January, our Joint Labor Management Insurance Committee starts looking at insurance rates, and last year, we did something differently. We'd been with a broker, Driver Alliance, and had been using them for the last couple of years to solicit commercial health and welfare insurance from carriers, and we decided to make a change. We did a request for proposal, and actually, as a result of that process, brought in a different broker, Wells Fargo. One of the things we've been working out, we're looking at, since we've been buying commercial insurance for the last couple of years, is trying to break the cycle where we'd have a carrier come in, basically, we'd have them for a couple of years, they'd realize how costly it is to do business in this area, we'd deal with a double-digit rate increase, we'd have to basically change plan design to basically get the rates down where there is some semblance of affordability, and then, in two years, they were gone because they actually gave us another quote that we couldn't live with. And so, through this process of soliciting an RFP for another broker, we made it clear that one of the things we wanted to explore is, what would the feasibility of looking at a trust or a joint powers authority? And those things have always been kind of out of our reach because of a, even when I was outside the district, it was always, Santa Barbara can do better by themselves than they can do in a pool. And, but what has happened over time is that those lines have started to converge. So, we asked our broker to actually solicit quotes, not only from commercial insurance carriers, but also CF CISC, who's one of the largest JPAs in the state, if not the nation, for health and welfare insurance, would be interested in giving us a quote. And as you can see, the results were, you know, ATN at fifteen point one percent, Blue Shield at eleven point oh percent, Health Net at eleven point seven percent, and CISC3, which is Anthem Blue Cross, who they have a relationship with, at thirteen point two. As a result of our committee's deliberation, we felt it's in the best interest of the district to go with CISC, because CISC operates as a blind pool. So, we're not independently rated based on our experience, and they don't track our experience in the larger pool, which is a statewide pool. And so, our feeling was, the high cost of doing business here would be underwritten by other districts elsewhere in the state, and that's how blind pools operate. So, even though it was a little bit higher than some of the other quotations, we felt that going to CISC probably be the last, best long-term solution for us, and hopefully give us some stability. And you can kind of see what their rate increases have been here in the last couple of years, and most of the other districts in the county are in CISC right now. So, it's our recommendation to move forward. As you can see, this is, we'll have to go back and negotiate with our individual bargaining units, how this actually plays out, we're only obligated for the first one percent of the cost increase, and I'm sure we're going to have some extensive discussions, both with SBTA and CSEA, about how we get affordable healthcare.
Mrs. Deacon?
Because the district is only responsible for picking up one percent, when things like co-payments are negotiated, does that, is that one percent factor taken into account?
No, the one percent is basically one percent of a prior year. So, then what happens is, let's say, we have a thirteen point seven percent increase, and let's say SBTA has an interest in getting it down to eight, or nine, or seven percent, then we look at plan design, increases in co-pay, things, things like that, that's, those are the changes in plan design. And, you know, you'll probably hear from Lane that part of the problem is, is we've diluted our purchasing power with respect, because we've had so many plan design changes to basically keep costs down. So, we're looking for long-term stability, and obviously, it's not a magic bullet here, but we think that this will provide us more stability and probably cost avoidance in the future.
So, the benefits could, in fact, shift as a result of the negotiation process?
They could, if...
The coverage could shift.
Yeah, and there will probably be some give and take with, in the negotiating process.
Well, I just have to say, and maybe Mrs. Cordero's had this experience, City College is affiliated with CISC, and, and I had very positive experiences with them administering claims and things like that, so I, I think they're a brand name that we can feel comfortable with.
They're, they're a well-run organization, and, you know, if anything, they're not in the business to make money. I mean, they're, they're joint powers of other public entities. I mean, in theory, if they make too much money, they should rebate it back to the districts.
Public comment? Mrs. Cordero?
I'm sorry, I just had, I had a quick question. I just wanted to make, make sure that I was understanding the information correctly. On the executive summary, on the fourteen point six percent, and, and the two million that is identified there, it is also identified on the cover sheet?
Right.
Is that, because on the cover sheet, I thought, it, it says, I thought it meant that CISC would require that increase.
No, what, what that's saying is, that's kind of aggregated average total over prior year, and obviously, we're, we're picking up, as an employer, the first one percent, and obviously, you can see that's a big number, and I think on the following, you might have saw, I, I didn't include it, but I think I sent an email to Dr. Sarvis that showed the actual contributions from each of the bargaining units, if there's no plan design changes, or things of that nature, and you can got a good idea how much everybody's out of pocket.
Okay, I think I, I understand it.
Public comment?
Yes. Mr. Wheeler?
I will try to be brief. Thank you for the opportunity, I'd like to thank Mr. Smith's leadership on this, and the cooperative effort that was made by both Admin and my sister in union, the CS, CS, CSEA, to try to come up with a solution on this. This is, obviously, we all know, a national program. Obamacare hasn't exactly been the panacea we had hoped it would be. We'll still yet to see what that does. However, I really wanted to let you know how much the health benefit costs our employees every year. As Mr. Smith alluded, we have been driving, offsetting the ever-increasing cost by driving membership usage, and we've tried to keep that to those more isolated incidences where not everyone's getting this type of examination, or needing that type of a treatment. But in the last two go-rounds with this, we've increased our co-pays on office visits, on specialist visits, on, on our RX, and the members' buying power and ability to sustain their lifestyle in Santa Barbara is getting eroded ever more frequently by this cost. And while we believe this would be a good move, we're hoping to see a mediation of the increases, because as Mr. Smith said, it, it's been kind of this bait and switch, we'll bring you in for two percent, and we, we move to a shield, and then we move to an anthem, and the next year, we're back at the proctologist with a twenty-eight percent increase, and we're hoping that that will mediate with this new CISC program. But I do want to let you know that, that the employees are getting harmed, they're burying this again, in addition to all the other things that, that your employees have to deal with in this district, and I think are doing so in a very productive, cooperative way, we are really getting hit hard by this. And I guess it's a, hopefully, we're making the best out of a bad news situation that we can. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. That concludes public comment.
Do we have a motion?
I'd like to move that we go ahead and approve, moving to CISC, Anthem is the Santa Barbara School District's health insurance provider for the 2010-11. Second?
Discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried five-zero. E4, approval of declaration of need for fully qualified educators for the 2010-11 school year, and approval of Resolution Number 2009 slash ten dash fifty-four.
This is a standard annual resolution. Ann Peake, our personnel analyst, is here just to answer your questions. We're asking for your approval.
Any questions?
Yes.
Mrs. Parker?
I'm concerned about the teacher librarian services and the estimate of two needs for emergency permit. Can you talk to me about those?
I'd be glad to. One of them is an extension from last year. Both of the people that we are considering for those positions are actually in intern credential programs, and are longstanding employees of the Santa Barbara School District.
So, when will they complete their credentials?
One will be done at this next June, as I understand it, so June 2011.
Two thousand and eleven.
And then the other one would be 2012.
Okay. I just want to be really clear that the need to be in credential programs and finishing credential programs, because I was, I think that one of, I, I thought one of them was an extension, and I just wanted to be sure that that was something that was in progress.
And part of that is that the programs for librarians don't offer what they call an intern credential program. The state doesn't do that, which is why we had to do an emergency permit for the librarians.
Okay. I'd like to approve the declaration of the need for fully qualified educators for the 2010-11 school year, and approve the Resolution Number 2009 slash ten dash fifty-four.
Second?
We do have public comment.
Okay.
Okay. Carolyn Renard.
Again, I don't see the wisdom of making a motion before you've had public comment. I wanted to ask, I noticed that one of the positions that they're asking for an emergency permit is for a resource specialist, but you're also laying off someone who has the qualifications to be a resource specialist, laying off, I use the term loosely, it's actually retaliation for his speaking out against all the things that this district is doing to violate the rights of special education students, but he's being, quote, "laid off." David Gilbertson, he, he's qualified for this position, so why are you laying off someone that's qualified, and now asking for an emergency permit to have someone who's not qualified for this position be in this position instead? I'm hoping Ann Peake can address this issue. I assume that it's a concern for the board also. It doesn't look like any of you guys are listening to me, so maybe it's not a concern of yours.
I'd like a definition of what is a resource specialist for Ann Peake.
Okay, well, I hope you also would like an explanation about how they can ask for an emergency permit to put someone who's not qualified in, and lay off someone who is qualified, a so-called layoff, that is.
Ms. Renard, that's the third time you've spoken, so that is the limit of public, of comments for one speaker at a meeting.
I can only comment on three agenda items?
Yes.
Yes, it says here...
You've got to be kidding.
It says, it says right on the document, "In no event shall a speaker be allowed to speak to more than three items at a single meeting."
You know, that just shows that you people really don't care what the public thinks, or the parents.
Thank you, Ms. Renard.
You don't care what happens to the kids.
Mrs., can you define resource specialist?
In this case, it's a resource specialist permit, and it's an anticipated need, it's not a definite need. There's a new resource specialist certificate that's available, for instance, for mild, moderate teachers that are currently teaching in our school sites. So, it's anticipated. We don't have the staffing for all of our schools at this point. Our schools are still working on their master schedules. So, this is something we submit to the Commission on Teacher Credentialing, saying, this is what we anticipate, we may... what we anticipate we may need," so that once the school year starts, if we do have that need, we can file for that particular credential.
I'm sorry, but what do they teach? I missed it.
They're resource for the special ed students.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I think they're... I apologize, Ms. Breen. I was looking at the, I was looking at the one for F1. Corey Breen.
Since I'll be commenting on two, I'm going to push in here right now. Thank you, I don't want your job. Thank you again, I don't want your job. It's been pretty rough on you guys tonight, so I do appreciate it. Moving on, resource specialist. Special ed has a lot of problems, and the last thing we need is someone underqualified. Let's just be honest, we already have problems with our general ed kids learning to read at a level that's acceptable. We've spent six million dollars on a new program that's not fully implemented, and now we want to authorize unqualified people to help our special ed department. Are you crazy? You can't do that. Please don't do that. Please don't authorize someone who's not qualified to be a resource specialist, please.
Any comments? Mrs. Deacon?
Well, once again, I just wanted to emphasize with this document that it's an anticipated need, it's not a definite need. So that's why we are asking for the approval in order to send the document to the Commission on Teacher Credentialing.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
What would, what would happen if we didn't approve it?
The entire document?
Well...
Well, we would need to resubmit the entire document. If you didn't approve it based on the information here, we would come back to another board meeting. We wouldn't be able to come back, I don't believe, though, until July, because I think I'm out of town at your next board meeting here at the end of June.
We have one, the twenty, we have two more, the twenty-second and the twenty-ninth.
And I am out of town on both of those days.
My question has more to do with the fact, because I've raised this issue before, about having, hiring people or employing people who don't actually meet the requirements for that credential, and we're hiring them on, or they're meeting it on an interim basis. And that's been a concern of mine for a while. But if we didn't, if we said, "Okay, no, we're not, we won't make any exceptions..."
On all the credentials?
Right, let's just say that as a board, we just said, "Okay, people have to meet the requirements, or we don't hire them." Would the result be that there would be some positions that would be unfilled?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion?
And I'll just clarify, if we have qualified people, we hire them.
Correct.
It's only if we cannot identify qualified people that we go to this emergency situation.
That is correct.
Thank you.
That helps me. Thank you, Mrs. Deacon. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Item E five, approval of board action on student discipline case number oh-nine slash ten dash forty-eight.
In case number oh-nine slash ten dash forty-eight, I move that we uphold the suspended expulsion for one school year and have the student return not to their home high school.
Second?
Discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
No, I didn't vote.
Oh, you didn't vote?
I was not party to those.
Okay, four to zero, with Dr. Noel abstaining. Going to the conference agenda, we'll bypass the break. We'll go directly to F1, Read 180 Gains Analysis Report, and it's down here for thirty minutes. Anything you can do to shorten that time would be very much appreciated.
Okay, then I will make this very quick. We have Dr. Cynthia White and a whole host of people to share about our Read 180 results, and in particular with our English learners. I know the board is very anxious to hear about this program, because it took a lot, and I'm sure Dr. White won't talk about everything in the long memo, as Mr. Heron said earlier, you've all read it, and so, and you've also been a part of the trials and tribulations when we were getting started, a lot of the technical pieces that we needed to get going. So, without further ado, Dr. White, are you ready to go?
Thank you.
There is a attachment, F1, that we were presented with, and I presume there's extra copies in the back. So, yes, Dr. White.
Good evening. The Read 180 team and I will present this year's reading gains in the Read 180 program, how we expect those gains to relate to the California Standards Test outcomes, and the story of our students. Here tonight are members of some of the, our team, and we will delineate, frame, and bring that, some of the personal stories of our students' successes to you. We have Joanne Keynes here this evening, representing the principal's perspective. We have Laura Baker and Kathy Dubach, who are Read 180 and System 44 teachers, they're sitting here in the front. We have Janet Gordon in the back, and Elise Simmons here in the front. They are reading coaches. Janet functions at a district level, and Elise at Santa Barbara Junior High School, supporting Kathy Dubach. We have Jerry Boils here, who is our California Scholastic representative. We have Patricia Duhan, who's a senior executive from Scholastic New York, who will present a statistical analysis of our gains this year, and he will situate that information for you within a national perspective. Briefly, through a facilitated process, the Santa Barbara Elementary and Secondary Teachers selected Read 180 as a replacement curriculum for English learners and struggling readers. The board adopted the curriculum for our students in June of two thousand nine. Read 180 students, Read 180 targets students who score below basic and far below basic on the California Standards Test in English Language Arts. In other words, these are students who are at least two years behind in reading. The Read 180 program consists of an instructional model that emphasizes targeted instruction in a small group, and it has a computer component that individualizes the instruction for the students. In considering a first year of implementation of any program, it's fair to say that we've had our fair share of challenges. As we did not have the superstructure in place to support the bandwidth wiring and switches that we needed, so our tech department and facilities departments scrambled to get these pieces into place, and we thank them. In addition, some sites didn't have the infrastructure in place, in classrooms like electrical, internet, fiber optic termination. And we also had further challenges with the Scholastic software. So as you review our gains, even though we're quite proud of them, please keep in mind some of these factors. Our relationship with the Scholastic team has helped us overcome these challenges, as have our coaches. And really, the heroes in this situation are our teachers, who have done a fantastic job implementing the program with fidelity. Tonight, you will hear from our teachers, who have each brought you a story of a student whose life has been changed because they can now read. I'd like to ask the board to hold their questions until we've completed our presentation. And I now present Patricia Duhan from New York Scholastic.
Good evening, everyone. It's an honor to be here. Came in from New York this morning, and it's always good to be in California. But we're here, from Scholastic's perspective, we're honored to be partnering with Santa Barbara School District. To Dr. White's point, this is a first-year implementation, and I personally work with districts across the country, and rarely do I get to see the commitment, the success, and the, you know, commitment to the intervention and to the students. Great leadership from the district, at the district level, at the school level, and really, like Dr. White said, the hard work that the teachers put in and that students put in. So it's an honor to be here, and we're going to go through some data. I think you've received information in the past about what is a lexile. Lexile is a measure of reading comprehension. It's also used to lexile text, as text can have a lexile score, and we, teachers use it to match students to text. We, in the Read 180 program, we use this Scholastic reading inventory that produces a lexile for a student. So lexiles are used to match student reading ability with text readability. Classroom use of SRI, the Scholastic reading inventory, really to support reading instruction, to set goals for students, to make sure that the scaffolding and the support that students have in order to access text are there. And then the last bullet, to monitor progress, monitor student performance and to track progress. Next, I'm going to talk about some results. Again, great results that we've seen the teachers and the students get with Read 180 in this year. Eight hundred and fourteen of the thousand students had a year or more of reading gain. We identified twenty-two students that were what we call our high flyers. They had a pre-test lexile of a hundred, pre-test score of a hundred lexiles. They had over forty sessions, and they achieved forty, four years or more in reading gains. When we looked at all the schools, on average, ten schools had approximately a year of reading gain, when we averaged all of the students plus, and then all schools that we looked at that were implementing Read 180 had positive gains. We also looked at software usage. As Dr. White mentioned, a component of the soft, of the program is the software. That's the one component that we can easily measure, we can get a data export and see how students are doing on the software, how many sessions, how much time they're spending, et cetera. These are some of the numbers. There's seventy-six average sessions that students had, and sixteen, almost sixteen and a half minutes per time that they were on the software. Nationally, that's really good, I think. Looking, thinking about Dr. White's comments with the challenges, the infrastructure, the first-year implementation, these are really phenomenal numbers, and the students' results will attest to that. Another measure of implementation that we look at is the number of students that are taking the SRI administration and how often they're taking the test. So what we looked at, every student had a pre and a post test, and there was a little over thirty-two weeks between those tests. So now the results. This is by school, and this graph shows you all thirteen schools that showed a positive gain. At the bottom, you'll see the number of students that are in the Read 180 program that had two tests and certain number of sessions, and then the school name. So you can see, and then on the left-hand side, the Y-axis, we had the lexile gains. So you had some schools that are doing phenomenally well, Galita Valley High, Cleveland Elementary, Dos Pueblos High School, Santa Barbara Community Academy, Le Colina Junior High, Adams Elementary, all the way down. I'm not going to name them all in the interest of time, because I know you want to move this along. But really strong results, I want to reemphasize that. When I work with districts, we're not seeing this kind of results in a first-year implementation consistently across all of the schools. I do want to note one thing at the bottom of this slide. Grades three to five, approximate grade level gain is a hundred lexiles. Grade six to eight, seventy-five lexiles is an approximate grade level gain, and fifty lexiles in the high school grade. So you could see that, on average, many of the schools are exceeding that, that gain.
Did you, I'm sorry, I was having trouble reading the last two or three names on the right.
Yeah, the, I'll do the last four for you.
Where is it?
San...
Oh, I don't hear.
The last three are Franklin Elementary, Monroe, and McKinley. We're going to look at some of those schools a little deeper in a couple of slides.
Got it.
The other way we looked at the data was what we call a session use analysis. This looked at the data according to the number of sessions, software sessions, or another way to look at it is days that students spent on the software. So on the Y-axis, we have lexile gain. Across the bottom, we have the number of sessions that students spent on the software. So the first bar graph is, there were sixty students, and they had six to nineteen sessions, and their lexile gain on average was sixty-six. The next one, there were eighty-nine students that had twenty to thirty-nine sessions, their average gain was sixty-seven lexiles. The next group, one hundred and seventy-two students, forty to fifty-nine sessions with a gain of ninety lexiles. And then we start really seeing even more and more growth, one hundred and ninety-seven students, sixty to seventy-nine sessions with a hundred and eight lexile gain, and then the last group, one hundred, one hundred and eighteen lexile gains for four hundred and eighty students that had eighty or more sessions. So you could see that the relationship is there, the more they're on the software, the more they're engaged in the program, the greater the gains. The other thing I do want to point out, which I think really speaks to the volume of the implementation, there are many more students on the right two bars than on the left two bars. So there's, in the, there's six hundred and seventy-seven students in the far-right two bars that had sixty or more sessions, and there are a hundred and forty-nine students in the first two. So that really speaks to the quality of the implementation, really, not only the teachers and the students, but also the tech department that Dr. White spoke about and the leadership that went into this. So you should be proud of your team. We did look at students that had a lexile decline. We looked at students that had, and we did this for three schools. We looked at students that had a decline of sixty or more lexiles, that's outside the standard error of measure, so we separated those students out, and we did a secondary analysis, and we highlighted three sites, and I'm going to walk you through that. So the three sites that we looked at are McKinley, Monroe, and San Marcos High School. The first one, McKinley, had a lexile gain of eighteen. I'm going to flip back a couple of slides to over here where we see McKinley had a lexile gain. There's eighteen students that had a lexile gain of seven lexiles on average. When I flip forward, we see that the yellow bar represents what we just saw, the eighteen students that had a gain of seven lexiles on average. We broke that down into two groups, broke that down into group thirteen students that did not have a decline of sixty or more lexiles. It could have been, didn't move a lot or did really well. Those thirteen students had a gain of ninety-one lexiles on average, and there were five students that really had a steep drop, an average of negative two hundred and thirteen. So we did this to show that, especially when we're looking at an average, those students, in this case, a minority of students, are having a significant decrease, and that's impacting the average. So even at McKinley, you're seeing some pockets of success. And we did that for Monroe and for San Marcos as well, that you see some students having a decline that is bringing that down. You may ask why some of those students are having the decline. Could be a testing environment issue, could be a student motivation issue, the Scholastic reading inventory is an online adaptive test. If someone's just clicking AAA all the way through, they're going to, you know, obviously not do, not do well. So we did that for three schools to show that there's pockets of success everywhere. As Dr. White pointed out, we also looked at the relationship between the lexiles, the SRI lexiles, and the CST English Language Arts test. There was this research study done that showed that correlation between the SRI and the CST English Language Arts. So with that correlation, the fall lexile scores, we can do a couple, we can do a couple of things. We can determine what students need to do to stay at the current CST level, and what students need to do on lexiles to increase a CST level. Again, this is a correlation, so we're assuming that that correlation is going to hold with the CST. We can also look at spring scores to determine the reading gains and forecast how students did on the CST. So I'm going to show you some of that. Before I do, I'm going to show you an example of that correlation. So this is an example for eighth grade. So we see the performance levels for the CST, and then we see the corresponding fall lexile cut scores and the spring lexile cut scores. So if I am an eighth grader that has scored a five hundred on the fall lexile, I would be in the below basic range, because I'm between four hundred and twenty-six and six hundred and thirty-six. So if I had a five hundred score, as long as I maintain that five hundred, I would stay in my performance level. If I dropped down below four sixty-six, I would drop, and if I increase my lexile to six hundred and eighty-nine or greater, I would jump up to the next performance level. We have these tables for all the grades, I just wanted to show you an example of one, what, an example of the data that we use for the following slides. what, an example of the data that we use for the following slides. This slide, based on the SRI lexile growth, shows the percent of students with an expected CST level improvement. So based on their fall lexile score and their spring lexile score and their grade, we, we can expect that thirty-eight percent of students at Santa Barbara Community Academy will jump or can jump a CST level. Thirty-eight percent at Dos Pueblos, thirty-eight percent at Santa Barbara Junior High, and so on. We also looked at the data by aggregating all of the scores to far below basic, below basic, basic, and proficient, according to the SRI CST correlation. And according to the fall and spring data and student tests, we see that we can expect that there's going to be a decrease in the students that are going to be far below basic, and an increase in the students that are below basic, basic, and proficient. So really, we're driving down the students that are in the far below basic category, and they're moving over to the below basic and the basic. So some of that twenty percent in the below basic category, or twenty-three percent, sorry, in the spring, in that below basic category, are students that have jumped that proficiency band from fall to spring. And we're hoping that that's going to obviously hold with your CST results, so we're looking forward to hearing about those, as, obviously as you are as well.
We'll be watching for that one.
So again, I want to thank you for your time. Congratulations on the great results, and it's an honor to represent Scholastic and to partner with Santa Barbara.
Thank you, Patricia Duhan. And at this time, I'm going to ask our, our teachers to bring a student to you. They've brought a student that they want to tell you their story, so we would like to personalize this a bit. So we have a story from Kathy Dubach from Santa Barbara Junior High School, one from Laura Baker from La Cumbre Junior High School, and then Elise Simmons, the coach is going to say something, and so is Joanne Caines.
I just want to make sure the parameters, we've got eleven minutes on this item left, so.
I'll talk fast. I was introducing a workshop by teacher Read 180 and System 44.
Can you go to the podium?
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Kathy Dubach, I'm a teacher at Santa Barbara Junior High. I was introducing a workshop that was entitled about identity, student identity. And I purposely, we began reading it and, and following the script for it and so forth, and the kids were just so engrossed in this story, and I knew exactly I had them right where I wanted them. It was a pivotal part of the story, and I decided to stop. And they were, it was a cliffhanger, and they were, well, what happens? What happens? And I said, you know what, we'll, we'll talk about it tomorrow, we'll finish this story. No, 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 we need to know what's going to happen. So this young lady raised her hand, and she said, is this on the internet? I said, is what on the internet? Is this story on the internet? And I said, I don't know. And she said, okay. The next day, she came in, she goes, I know what happened to Luisa, and I like the ending to that story. And I said, how did you find that out? She goes, I went on the internet, and I read the rest of the story, I had to know what happened to her. I've taught in this district for twenty-six years, and I've taught corrective reading, High Point, you name it, I've taught it. And this is the first program that I've seen buy-in by students, enthusiasm, and students that will come in at lunch to get more computer time, will stay after school, can you help me with my paragraph, my narrative? I've never seen this enthusiasm, and it's a pleasure to teach this program. One more minute, just one more, I just have to share with you. At the end of the year, I had them do a reflection, and I asked them about software in library books. These were their comments about the books in the Read 180 library. There's a book entitled The Big Lies about the Holocaust, and that, that was probably the number-one book that the students loved. And a student, a young man, wrote, this book touched my heart. The next book was Money Hungry, and this young lady said, I thought Money Hungry was an interesting book, because I could relate to the author. And then Happy Burger. It was a pleasure to read this amazing book. It showed me that I should fall in love with someone because of their character, not their looks. So, you know, it's things like this, they can relate to the books, they can relate to the software, the topics on the software. It was interesting to see what kinds of interesting ingredients are used to make money. I enjoyed learning about how fake money is made, I'm not sure if that was good or not, but I really liked learning about the extreme sport of surfing, and I truly want to try that sport. And extreme sports, this topic inspired me to try new sports. So the software, the books, the rotations, the small groups, the contact, that individual contact that we have, and that allows us to have these discussions, it's fabulous, and it's a pleasure for me to teach it. And I'd like to extend a personal invitation to each of you to come to Santa Barbara Junior High, room 160B, you're welcome at any time, and come see the program in progress. Thank you.